All right, I will call the Select Board being to order. Please let stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
All right, so we'll open the meeting with our public forum. Is there anyone who would like to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government? Okay, seeing none.
We have none.
That's all right. So now we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are: number one, to approve the June 11 minutes; number two, to approve a parade permit for Enter Stage Left Theater for its annual Wicked Five K fundraiser on October 27, 19; and three, to accept the resignation of G. Michael Pierce from the Board of Appeals and thanking for his service for the town. Would any member like to break out items for a separate vote?
The meeting minutes for our last meeting, there was one small change.
Okay, so you'll like to break out number one. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Mr. Catino, oh wait, nope. So I would like to request a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries? Okay, Mr. Catino.
Yes, it was just in the water and sewer rates discussion, it was stated that those systems would have been... Where is this exact spot? Mr. Catino expressed concern. It was noted that the Abrams Group reports over the last few years have pointed out the problem, have not pointed out the problem. That's what I actually said.
Okay. Mr. Kamala, take care of that.
So noted.
That was my only change.
All right, so if that's the only change, we'll request a motion to approve item number one on the consent agenda items.
As amended.
As amended.
Oh, so second.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries? Okay. Change of manager, Zeos Quattro Incorporated, 22 South Street. Select Board will consider approving a change of manager from Kimberly Winchman to Paul Winchman for Zeos Quattro Incorporated at 22 South Street. Board members, do you have any questions based on your review of the meeting materials and what you heard from the applicant?
I have a question for the town manager.
Mr. Herr?
Town manager, are you aware of any reason why we should consider anything but approving the change of manager position?
First of all, Mr. Winchman, you want to come and join us?
Through the chair. I'm not aware of any issues pertaining to Mr. Paul Winchman, who is proposed as the manager.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Town manager, he's... Mr. Winchman has all the qualifications, the tip certifications and everything that we would require of manager.
Correct, and he has many years of service.
I apologize, woman, I can't hear you.
So Mr. Nosula asked if you were tip certified, had all those qualifications, and Mr. Kamala was saying that you do.
Yes, I am.
Yes, and I was also hitting that you have many years of service.
I would say, sir, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else want to... Someone want to make?
I have a little question. Permitting comments of Board of Health said they hadn't received their food applications along with the change of management information. I assume they have gotten that by now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Catino, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to... What's the... You got it right here, sorry, sir. I request... I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of manager from Kimberly Winchman to Paul Winchman for Zeos Quattro at 22 South Street.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries? Thank you.
Thank you, selectmen, for your service and your time.
All right. So we posted... We're a little early for that. Can we do the annual appointments?
We can.
By the Select Board? All right. Let's see. So tonight, we're considering several appointments, and I first want to thank everybody who's volunteered to serve on a board or committee this year. The appointments have been divided up so that the appointments to some boards and committees will be made tonight, and appointments to others will be made at the next meeting. I also want to note that sometimes we have more applicants than vacancies for some boards, but not enough for others. So if you don't get appointed to one, think about volunteering for another. First, let's take up the appointments to boards and committees. We have a list, and we will take them in order. Let's see. We'll go back to this. Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, Mr. Kamala, how do we want to do this? In the past, we've just kind of...
Standing... My suggestion respectfully is that the board has a standing motion to approve the candidates, and then you call out the board and call out the names.
Okay. Let's give me a minute to get to that page on here. Oh, this is a page that isn't... So we are on... The following boards and committees will have vacancies on June 30, 2019, or sooner. Committee name: Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Total number of members, expiring terms for like two years. New person, John Morris. So we have... So for this committee name, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, we have five members, four expiring other... Do I see that there's three people that are applying for the four positions that are open? Is that what I'm reading?
Okay. That is correct.
Okay. So I would...
So before we jump into a standing motion, if I could, please... How many of the various boards and positions are going to be contested that we're looking at to see, if any?
There are a few problems. Not many.
Yeah, there are a few. We're looking them up, and I think that's why perhaps a standing motion might work where you may place a hold on the positions or the boards where you have more than one applicant for a single position. Similar to what we do with the consent agenda. But the difference being...
Yeah, but if you have a standing motion, and we get to one of those where there's a conflict, they're not a conflict, but there's just more than we have spots for, how are we going to sort through that?
You have... You place a hold, and then you have a discussion, and then vote, and then move on. Yeah.
All right, so we're just basically going to stop the standing motion when we get to those scenarios.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board have put a standing motion on the table to approve the applicants whose names will be read off for each of the various committees until another member brings up a question about one of the names.
Okay.
I wish John Morris was here tonight, because he has applied for three or four different positions. And I'd like to know what he really wants. I mean, I guess we can put them on all four, but...
He may want them all.
Yeah.
He may.
Through the chair, we can answer that question.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
He withdrew from Personnel Committee.
He withdrew from the Personnel Committee. Okay.
I'll second it. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
For the standing affirmative motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Stand? All right, so he's pulled out from the Personnel Commission. Okay. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, we have three spots: Beth Malloy, Amon Hydri, and John Morris, for four spots. So we're good with that?
So we would just take... We would then do another quick vote. All in favor?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Concom, Conservation Commission. We have three... Number of expiring terms or vacancies for three years. We only have one applicant, Ed Harrow. I would like to... All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Didn't we get an email about the chair endorsing a couple of other candidates as well? I don't understand.
So they will apply after the deadline, so they'll be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Those will be on the next agenda.
Okay. Council on Aging, I'm sorry. There are two expiring terms or vacancies for three years. We have three people: Sheila Frakleton, Don Wolf, and John Pelitch. Are any of those three here right now?
Now, here's where I have... I have a question. I would like to find out from Don Wolf, which he's also applied for the Cultural Council, which is the next one down. And Sheila Frakleton is new, but she's been working at the Senior Center for quite a long time as a volunteer in a number of different places. And they would like to see her on that committee, but I wouldn't want him. He's been on it, and so has John. If he didn't want to move.
So do we want to maybe... Since we're a little ahead of schedule, should we maybe table this till towards the end of the...
Table that one, and the next one below it?
Yeah, in 15...
Well, yeah. Well, he can go on the next one below it also. I mean, it fits, but does he want to?
Well, in the Cultural Committee, there's seven vacancies and two... Three applicants, so...
Yeah. He can go on the next one. The Cultural... But the... And that's the one he put down was his number-one choice, with the Council on...
Well, I would assume...
Cultural Council.
If someone's applying for more than one, I'm assuming they want to be on more than one.
No, well, then, I don't know. It could be just... I don't know.
But we have three candidates for the positions.
People... Yeah, you don't want to... You don't want to put people on three different committees, because they probably just thought that it might be full, you know, and fill up their week. You know, that's...
It will fill up their week. They shouldn't have applied for more than one if they don't want to go on more than one.
This is where the bog-down part kicks in.
Yeah. So...
Let's table what we need.
All right, let's table this. Yeah, let's table this. So the next is...
Historical.
The Historical Cultural Council. We have seven expiring terms and vacancies for a two-year length. It looks like we have three people applying for that: Diva Marie Nelson, Don Wolf, Andrea Wilk.
So I think we have three expiring terms.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Nelson withdrew today.
Okay, so we have two. We have Don Wolf and Andrea Wilk. So I will take them all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries? Hopkinen Historical Commission. We have, let's see, three full members for three years, and we have one, two, three people, correct, that are going for this, it looks like? So all in favor of accepting Beth Watson, Nanda Barker-Hook, and Christine Remby?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
All opposed?
I was waiting for the second.
And carries?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
Keefe Tech School Committee. We have one expiring term or vacancy, and we have Ruth Knowles, who has applied. No application, but...
Reappointment, yeah.
She is...
She's reappointed.
Yeah. So... All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Marathon Committee. We have five vacancies for three years. We have Amon Hydri and Patricia Keating.
We just put Amon Hydri on the first one, on the first day.
Yeah, but... So I'm assuming that...
This is not correct. I was in touch with the Marathon Committee because I said, "I can't believe you have five vacancies," and they don't. What happened was...
Hold on a second. Let's poll this till the...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We want to get through the ones that are easy, then we tackle the ones that can be...
Okay.
Six hours. Thank you. Just doing my job as your parliamentarian.
Roger that. Keep it going.
We're in a building.
Okay. So we are Permanent Building Committee. We have two terms that are expiring or vacant. We have two applicants, Rob Scott and Mike Demiasio. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Personnel Committee. We have two vacancies for three years. We have two applicants, Patricia Sinecole and John Morris. All in favor?
Morris withdrew, right?
He did withdraw.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor of appointing Patricia Sinecole?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Is John Morris going to be in the tax relief? Is he out of everything? John Morris, do you take his name out of everything?
No.
No.
Okay, so... Tax Relief Committee. We have one term available for three years, and we just have John Morris going for it. So all in favor of appointing John Morris?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good. Upper Charles Trail Committee. We have two members... No, I'm sorry. We have two full members, two associate members, and one Board of Selectmen member for three years. We have two people seeking reappointment, Jane Moran and Barry Rosenbloom.
And I'm the selected member.
Okay. And Mr. Catino? So we will add... So I'm assuming that... Yep. So Moran and Rosenbloom are both full members, and John will be the Board of Selectmen member. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good.
Did you have any associates on that? Or did you mention two others?
There's two alternate members, but there's no one that's applying for that. Youth Commission. We have three vacancies for three years. We have Alice Joyce, who's new, Terry Forensick, and John Ronan, which are the three. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Select Board Appointments. Traffic Constables, formerly called Special Officers for three-year terms. John Kraus, Dan Smith. Reappointment... So the new ones would be John Kraus and Dan Smith. And the... Should I read the list of people that are seeking reappointment?
Please.
Okay. Evan Brooks, Megan Durad, Jane Goodman, Derek McGill, Darlene Haynes... Haynes. Stephen Iaterola, John Litchfield, James Collins, Doug Lewis, Carl Harris, Steve Slaman, Doug Oliver, Stuart Montgomery, Tom Poirier, Bill Proctor, Bob Santucci, Rick Flannery, Tom Griffin, Cynthia Valobson, Braden Louise, Dave Shane, Chuck Wallace. Town Council, Mayares in Harrington, J. Raymond Mayares. Labor Council, Nick Anastopoulos. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Town Manager Appointments. Jerry Holland for Parking Clerk for a one-year term. Bill Proctor, Animal Control Officer, one-year term. Liz Jeffrey, Inspector of Animals, one-year term. Director of Municipal Inspections, Recommended Appoinment... Oh, wait, shall we vote on those other ones first?
Yeah.
Yeah, all together, that's fine.
All together, okay. Director of Municipal Inspections, Recommended Appointments for one-year terms. Charles DeBrits, Plumbing and Gas Inspector. Peter Zareski, Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector. Dan Hunt, Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector. Ed Hicks, Wiring Inspector. Ed Hicks, Person to Cut Wire in Case of Fire. Jim Melnick, Assistant Wiring Inspector. Kevin Burey, Assistant Wire Inspector. Jess Palmer, Public Wire. William Robinson, Public Wire. All in favor?
If I may, Mr. Chair. There are additional names. Michael Christopher Foley, Mutual Aid Building Inspector. Jane Adams, Public Wire. Jessica Palmer, Public Wire. James Wright, Public Wire. Chelsea Adams, Public Wire. William Robinson, Public Wire.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. All right. Looks like we're zipping through that.
Way to go, Mr. Chairman.
Through these resumes, blah, blah, blah. All right, so I guess we can move on to the next. So we'll come back to those.
When do you want to come back to those?
Probably after the... I don't see anybody. Shall we do it now? Do you think we can bang it out in 10 minutes?
Yeah, we'll take one of them.
Which one do you want to do?
What was the first one we didn't get through? I don't know.
Marathon Committee.
Marathon Committee.
That's a... What they think happened was, last year, the public service people, who used to be appointed yearly, they now got appointed for a three-year term last year, and they're added into that number. So they only have one position. And then there was another oversight with the Technical Department and Mr. Adam Monroe, who has been on the committee for many, many years. And he's got an email thing back and forth since May 1st for his application. And his application isn't in there, but he has been on the committee for a good number of years. He's been in charge of the VIP security up at the high school. And he's the son of Dr. Bobek, so you can imagine him. And he's been on for a lot of years. And he's not anywhere in the town's files. His name doesn't... It just doesn't show up. So we want to make sure that he gets his appointment tonight, because he's been sworn in downstairs. But for some reason, the files don't have him.
This is on the Marathon Committee?
He's on the Marathon Committee, yes. And the other thing is... Oh, Chuck Wallace. We have Ted Cadillac, who has also been on the committee. Well, he hasn't been on the committee. He's been coming to all the committee meetings because he's been doing the parking up at EMC for EMC. But he would like to be put on as a member of the committee now.
So there are... Four people now going for one spot.
There are three people going for one spot. Cadillac and Monroe. Well, actually, Monroe shouldn't have been going for a spot. He should have it. We just want to make sure that he's on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's table this one. You have to the next meeting.
We don't have to do that tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good.
I would suggest...
We get till April.
Yeah, let's figure this out.
We got to April on that one.
What's the next one?
Well, there is something. No, you don't have to.
Kamala, what's the next one?
Okay.
Council on Aging. In fact, I was expecting the director. She had sent me an email. Emmy had suggested, at least as her opinion or input. The existing chair has been doing a fantastic job. Would like to continue. The other member also has been a great addition to the Council on Aging. Brought diversity of her opinion. She really appreciates and commands the additional applicant who has been volunteering at the Senior Center, and she would like her to continue to volunteer. However, her recommendation is that the two existing members continue.
Okay.
Okay.
Any conversation on that from the board?
So who are those two members?
Don Wolf and John Pelitch.
Yes.
Okay, so I will... All in favor of appointing Don Wolf and John Pelitch to the Council on Aging? I said all in favor.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Carries? Who's next?
It's just the timing of it.
That's it?
That's it? All right.
So those are the only... Mary Jo, those are the only ones that we have to hold off on?
So we're just tabling the...
The only one now is the Marathon Committee.
We're just tabling Marathon.
Adam Monroe is here to speak to.
Hey, Adam.
We can pick up...
Attempts at getting his application.
With the chair's permission, we can pick up item number six.
Item number six.
John Westerling.
John is here? Okay.
Number six.
So the Select Board will consider approving requests from John Westerling, DPW Director, for night work on the Cedar Street Water Main project between Main Street... Between Main Street to minimize the loss of water service to Cedar Street residents during construction. The pavement is too narrow to accommodate the necessary construction activities, and there are no viable detours that can be implemented during the day that would allow for the safe and efficient movement of traffic. If this approved is approved... If this request is approved, work will commence at the end of June. It will last approximately 10 weeks. And the hours of operation are 9:00 PM through 5:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday. All right. Mr. Kamala, can we have an explanation on this, please?
Yes. This is a request that comes before the board through the Director of Public Works. The recommendation offered has the support The recommendation offered has the support of the public safety officers and John can provide the details.
Good evening. Through the chair, this is required replacement of the water main on Cedar Street. And this is the result of funds that were approved a year and two years ago for the design and construction. We met with the contractor, with the engineer, with the police chief and with the fire chief. And unfortunately, I say unfortunately because it will cause disruption. Unfortunately, the only way to construct the water main reconstruction or replacement is with night work. We looked at the width of the paved road on Cedar Street. And it's essentially from Main Street to the bottom of the hill. And there, there's just not sufficient width there to provide for an excavator, a dump truck, and two lanes of traffic. We looked at the possibility of routing traffic through Walcott Street during the day. But that proved to be too sharp of a turnoff of Main Street in order to safely accommodate the traffic. So we're requesting approval from the board of, excuse me, from the select board to conduct that night work.
Okay, is there anyone present who would like to comment on the proposal for night work? Seeing none. Board members, any questions or thoughts? Mr. Herr?
So 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, Cedar Street, which is right outside here, just over the way. There's houses there. I mean, that's, that's tough duty for those residents. I hear you in terms of daytime, daytime issues and traffic and congestion and all that. But what are we, have we had a chance to think through how this is going to impact those residents living right there? And what can be done, if anything, to minimize the disruptions to their sleep? Which I assume most of them are going to be doing in those hours?
So through the chair, again, I said unfortunately, this is the only way that we can foresee the construction occurring is at night because of the traffic flow. We did look at the possibility of, for example, not doing or taking off the backup alarms on the trucks. But that was proved to be a safety problem and would conflict with OSHA. We don't want trucks backing up without that, the beeping noise. I guess the only thing to state is that the work in front of the homes will probably only be two nights' worth in front of each individual home moving down the street. And that's for two different periods. The first is during the actual physical construction or installing the new main. And then later, as they go back and they put in the services. So it, it will be probably two nights towards the beginning of the project and two nights towards the end of the project. The contractor did state that if there was any work that could be accomplished during the daytime that doesn't require them to have an excavator and a dump truck in the paved way, that they would conduct that work during the daytime. The contractor would like to do it during the day, but the, the safety officials just don't believe that we can get traffic through there in an efficient and safe manner.
Can we do the cutting during the day?
Yes.
Are they going to use a big blade and just cut this pavement out?
Yes.
Can we do the cutting during the day and then just hauling at night? Is that possible?
So again, through the chair, any work that can be accomplished during the day that will still allow two lanes of traffic to flow, they will do that during the day. And that includes things like cutting the pavement initially. If there's any work that, again, doesn't require the work of an excavator. Because the problem, the problem comes about when we have the excavator next to the dump truck in that narrow width of roadway.
Okay. And have you notified all the residents of this project?
We have. We handed out, we went door to door and handed out notices, letting them know that there would be a meeting tonight. We left numbers for myself and the project engineer and the design engineer in the event that they had any questions. To date, the only, the only concern that we heard back was from the post office. Just they have employees that show up at 3:00 AM and they wanted to make sure that they could arrive. But other than that, to date, we haven't heard any response back.
Okay. Mr. Cattino?
So to that point, will we be able to have steel plates or something down for those employees so that the mail must go through?
Absolutely.
My father was a, worked for the US Postal Service, so I had to make sure that that's, that is protected.
That's an easy one for us to accommodate.
Through the chair.
Yes. So it's the end of June, when it starts, that means the 4th of July weekend would be, there would be construction going on. Is there any way that we could kind of move it just so people can enjoy that weekend?
Through the chair, because we had to come before the select board and the meeting is tonight, the contractor won't mobilize until after the 4th.
We could horrible spray it, Ron.
I understand.
It's going to be a beauty, too.
They could make it horrible.
Yes, they could make it horrible.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that the water main replacement is going to be a requirement for the work that's going to be done on the Main Street corridor project. So it's essential that we get in and we replace that water main there so that the work can happen associated with the, the corridor project.
Okay. Mary Jo, anything?
Well, I, I read it over and you gotta do what you gotta do.
Oh, good. So I will look for a motion, number six.
So moved to approve the night work when required. That would be the motion, just kind of specific, the when required part.
Second.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we've got to go back to, thank you, John. We have a tree hearing a little bit later. Norman, do we have to wait until 8:40 for that?
Yes, we have, we have another public hearing.
Right, we have the seven o'clock, we're going to open now.
Yep.
I'll be here.
All right. All right, so the, let's see where we're at here. I will request a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So this is a public hearing so the board can hear from the public before setting the municipal water and sewer rates for the next fiscal year. I will turn it over to the town manager's team for a brief presentation, then we'll open it up for public comment. First, we'll talk about the sewer system, then water. Mr. Kamala?
Yes, through the chair, in your meeting packet, we distributed the public notice for the hearing. The recommendations are presented by town staff on the water and sewer rates. We also included the reports that were put together alongside their summaries by Mark Abraham's group, the consulting, consulting group that has helped us over the years in addressing this issue. Big picture. What I think the information presents to you is that the current financial position of the water enterprise is satisfactory for the level of revenues predicted. The projected financial position is fair for the level of revenues. That is, the current revenue is sufficient to cover both operating and debt expenses in the immediate future. However, as you will hear from the finance team, we do have concerns going forward. Relative to the sewer enterprise, as we have discussed over the years, we are facing a structural deficit. And we'll provide recommendations to the board as to how to overcome this issue, medium term and long term. At this point, with the chair's permission, I want to pass this over to the finance team who will then outline the recommendations from staff.
Great. The chair and the members of the board. We provided a summary sheet along with the extensive report developed by the Abrams Group. And speaking to the summary sheet, the first few points on that sheet review what we discussed at the last meeting. Namely, that the sewer enterprise fund is in a difficult position because of a bulge in debt service expense in FY 20 and 21, and because of a loss of revenue tied to the system's two biggest users. The sewer enterprise needs dramatic rate increases in both years, 20 and 21, to remain in the black as required by our state regulator. The need drops off after FY 21 when a significant bulge of the debt is paid off. The two options shown on the sheet, option one is for a 35% across the board increase this year to keep our position up to state standards. Option two raises about the same amount of money, but does it by creating an additional tier level and by using different rate increases for different consumption levels. This is one way to respond to the concern board members have expressed about rate shock impacts on low-income seniors. This is a good innovative option, but it is not perfect. Because although it would provide relief to many seniors and others of limited means who don't use much water, it would provide the same relief to many people of all ages who don't use much flow, but who can afford to pay their share. So it's a good option, but not a perfectly focused option. But we did think it was important to give you several options that would keep the system compliant.
So at this point, we will take questions from the board. Again.
Would you like water comments now, or are you going to do sewer first?
Do sewer first. Yeah, do sewer first.
Water, great, great.
Yes.
Okay. Comments, Mr. Nasrullah?
I'm going to, I'm going to hold off for a little bit.
Okay.
As I hear some discussion.
Mr. Cattino?
Yeah, I, I just hope that in the, in next year, that, that we have some better outlook. You know, it just, you know, it just seems like every year that we're surprised. It's, we think that we have money in the, money in the bank that we can, you know, I remember two years ago, we thought that we could give a rate, a rate break to people. And then to find out that all of a sudden, wow, we're 68% short on South Street. And we're 10% down on everywhere else. You know, I, I, I'm hoping that, that with, with all this guidance, that, that, you know, that's what I think we're being paid for, that's what we're looking for. You know, we're, we're here to be educated, to try and make an educated decision with the, with the information that's put before us. And in the last couple of years, it seems like it hasn't been all there or just been, you know, it's surprising that it was, that we were down, I believe it was 68% on, on South Street. That should have been, somebody should have at least thought about that. Where with Lonza gone and some other ones, we should have put that into the calculation two years ago because Lonza was already gone for three years at that point. And said, hey, we're, this, we might show some, there's something might come up. Then I wouldn't even consider doing a, a rate cut before. You know, 35% is, is insane. I know that Mr. Herr is going to pick up on that one in a couple of minutes. But, you know, I just, you know, we have to do what it takes to, to keep the, the system going. But we definitely need better, better research and insight for, for, for next year. So this, so it's not a, a big surprise to us and to all the wait payers.
Sir, we hear that direction and we understand it fully. And we are very strongly committed to giving you all the information you need to keep track of this on a multi-year basis and.
I, I must say though, I do love the, I do love the, the real-time changes. That we can, we can actually watch the graph change right this, this year. That really does help. What 2%, what 3%, what 35% will, will end up doing for the system. So thank you for that.
Mr. Herr?
Wasn't there some discussion with the team about a fixed number for senior population of some kind?
It's here.
Is that what this tier thing is talking about? I thought it was more of a fixed number.
Yes, you, you raise a good question. And in fact, even in speaking with the chair, we, we, he, he did raise this question and I will posit to, to, to the team as well as to the board. Other communities do provide relief for seniors. That is based on qualifications contained in the property tax relief program. And I think the question that Mr. Taston put forth, which I believe is also what, what you are getting at is, are there any opportunities here in Hopkinton to do the same above and beyond the tier program?
Exactly. So we have some, I'm prepared to discuss that if you're, you're interested in some information on that.
Well, that was, that was my question. Would you please explain the options of the tier?
Sure. So the, the two options that are presented there are just for rates for everybody with no, no respect to special conditions. The first option is just a flat increase that the system has done before. And the second option just creates another tier which would help all the low-level users, whether they need the help or whether they don't. But there are other opportunities here. In several discussions, board members have focused on this impact. And so we spent some time on it and did some benchmarking to see how other communities handle the situation. Many communities offer sewer or water discounts to some users. And I looked at five communities that took different approaches. Ben, can you give that out? There are really three factors that are commonly considered in this kind of effort. Factor one is who is eligible. Some communities use more restrictive criteria and some communities use less restrictive criteria. On the very restrictive side, the town of Maynard started with a really generous program, but scaled it back to where it now only applies to people over 70, not 65, and only to people who are receiving one of the property tax exemptions already. So you would have to be a disabled veteran who's over 70, or a low-income senior who's over 70, or a blind person who's over 70 to get this. Other communities grant a, a discount to people who are over 65. Some of them have income limits and some of them have no limits. Some communities like Melrose and Air allow low-volume users over 65 to qualify with no income test. So the first question we in Hopkinton would have to ask is, who qualifies if we're going to offer a discount? The second factor is, should the offer be more generous or less generous? On the more generous end, Westboro bills people who qualify under their rules a very flat rate of $40 a year for water and $40 a year for sewer. But they have a tough income test, so relatively few people qualify. For our average sewer user, that would be a discount of over 90%. On the other end of the spectrum, Air offers a 10% discount to people who qualify under their rules. The third factor is level of consumption. It seems that several towns and two of the five that I looked at offer discounts to seniors who are low users. For example, Revere offers a 30% discount for seniors who use under 4,000 cubic feet a year, 20% for seniors who use 4,000 to 9,400 cubic feet a year, and 10% for seniors who use a lot of water, over 9,400 cubic feet a year. So if Hopkinton were to move down this road, the board would need to define who to offer the discount to, how generous it should be, and whether it should be tied to consumption or just to the other criteria. We also need to remember that giving any user a discount shifts cost to users who are not qualifying for the discounts. So it's a pretty delicate balance. I looked at the five benchmark towns and did some rough estimates of what programs like they have might cost us here. And they're summarized on the right-hand side of that sheet. The cost range was from several hundred dollars, which would have almost no impact on other users, to about $27,000, which would have about a 2% impact on other users. So just to talk about the who and what we might want to consider. If we consider the very low-income seniors who get the Section 41(c) property tax exemption, and that's an exemption for seniors who are longtime residents and have family incomes of under $37,000 a year. So that's quite low.
Is that, so when you say the income, is that pension, is that social security money that they take in?
Yes.
Social security?
Yes. So that's a pretty low income.
How much was that, 30,000?
37. And we have 20 of those people in town right now getting that exemption. So if you were going to start by need, that is a good place to start. If you want to look at everyone who gets property tax exemptions, including the blind, the Gold Star widow, the disabled veterans, that gets our number up to about 80. And if you were going to go to everybody who qualifies for the state circuit breaker, which is actually a pretty generous program. And that's a program for families, you can have a quite expensive house, like a $780,000 house, quarter of a million in assets, and up to $88,000 a year in family income. That's, that's pretty, that's a pretty healthy standard of living. And we have 250 of those people. So you would probably want to think about whether you would want to try to capture a group like the 250 people who qualify for the circuit breaker, the 80 people who qualify for the exemptions that we already grant through the Board of Assessors, or just the 20 people who are the Section 41(c), very low-income seniors with very limited means. And just to give you a rough number, we, you know, not everyone's a sewer user. We think the lower-income people probably tend to be more so. Because the, it's people who live further out in some of the newer developments who are not the sewer users. So if we figure about two-thirds of the population is going to be a sewer user. And we offered, for example, a $200 discount. Some towns do a flat-rate discount, which would be 13% for our average user. That would cost everyone else about a 2.5% increase if we did all the people who qualify for the circuit breaker. It would cost about 0.8% to everyone else if we did the 80 people who get the other property tax exemptions. And it would cost virtually nothing, 0.2%, if we just took care of the people on the 41(c).
So the 80 people that you're talking about, that, that includes the very low-income seniors that are Section 41(c) and that'll also include the blind, Gold Star, disabled veteran?
Yes. Yes.
That's the E, right, not the 250.
Yeah, I have the data right here. Surviving spouses, minors, or persons 70 years and over who are limited income. It would include disabled veterans, it would include veterans and surviving spouses, the 22 Es, and certain elderly persons over 70. The recap sheet from the state here. So about 80 people. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Herr?
So we're in a public hearing, we'll come, get to that, right?
Yep.
Are you prepared to show us the rate increase numbers that we would need to vote tonight to accommodate those 80 people with the 250 or the 20, whatever the board decides? You accommodate those numbers into the rate increase and we can make the decision all tonight? Do you know what I'm saying?
So this was a late-breaking tasking from my supervisor, and I think I'm prepared for that. I think there would be virtually no change for the 41(c) cohort because it's, you know, with all the estimates, it's in the noise. I think if, for the all 80 of the people getting exemptions, we're probably prudent to raise the rate by a half a percent from 35 to 35 and a half, and probably to 37 for the, if you wanted to hit everybody on the circuit breaker.
I don't understand that circuit breaker number and then some of the numbers that are associated with that, like the value of the house.
Right.
I mean, the income I can get, because, you know, income can disappear very quickly if you're living in Massachusetts. But the value of the house, almost that income don't seem to apply. I don't understand that so much.
They really wrote that law to be very, to not weed people out too soon. And I think the sensitivity was to people who are, have been living in a nice house for a long time. It is appreciated underneath them. But the, the number 778, isn't it?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And I, I think it also has to do with your taxes and your water and sewer bill.
That, that's another.
Altogether can't be more than 10% of your income.
Have to be more than 10%.
Yeah.
So, so if you, you could have a house here above the average house, you could have a $700,000 house. And if your water, sewer, and taxes were 10,000, and your income was 87,000, and you were a married couple, you would qualify for this.
So I can see how somebody's been here for a long time that got this house that's worth a lot of money, but it wasn't necessarily coming from their income and their mortgage. So they got this big expensive house.
That's what it's meant.
So that's why I'm a little bit more inclined, inclined to think about that grouping as well.
Yeah, me too.
And some towns create their own means test. They'll pick 50,000 or 60,000 in income instead of using the state circuit breaker at 88. There's just an infinite number of ways to do this, to capture the pool. And then the smaller the pool is, the more generous it can be without being very impactful on people, on everyone else. It's, it's a complicated thing to try to discuss on the fly.
Okay.
Would this discount be in their, in their bills? I mean, we don't need like to have a elderly reserve for people to come and apply for this and then get the discount or, you know, how does this?
I spoke to several of the towns and I, I really wanted to understand what they offer. I didn't get into the mechanics of it. So what, if we did something along these lines, we would find a compliant approach and develop the mechanical method to achieve it. I think the idea. I think the idea is, we, we need to have a sense of not doing what Maynard did, which was offer twenty percent to everybody over sixty-five, and ten percent of the town came in the first day and filed the applications, and they were overwhelmed, they had to back off. So this might be something where we start slow and expand it after we get some experience. You know, there, there are many approaches to this.
Now, this, this three-tier option is for the percentage, but it's for users only, it's for the, the lower water users.
Right. Yes. And so we think, you know, the Venn diagram of low use and low income is not perfect, but we think that the low use may capture a lot of older, single people, but it also captures people who spend half the year in the south of France. So, it's not perfect.
Okay. So, and in defense of your boss, I tasked him with this job at about one-thirty this afternoon.
We thrive on this kind of, we thrive on this kind of opportunity.
That's being a pain in the-
So, no, I, I think this is great, and we had done a lot of work on it. We, you know, we were looking at it, we didn't do all this today, we, we've been looking at this and discussing it, and, and really trying to respond to the comments of the board, and we think our role is to provide you with the information you need to make good policy decisions, and this is an interesting thing that other communities do, and we thought you might want to explore it.
Yep, excellent. Okay.
So I, I think through the chair, what you are hearing from staff is that the board considers the options provided. The tiered option, I think, would be advisable, because it lines up water and sewer, so we follow the same formula. The last option that we just discussed based on the questions from Mr. Teston and Mr. Here, as well as the comments that were expressed by the board during the informal hearing regarding mitigating the impact of a thirty-five percent increase on the low users and fixed-income residents, is in addition, I just want to make sure that the board understands this, is in addition to moving to a tiered solution.
And, on, so, did we come up with a set dollar number on this?
So I, I, you know, I, some other towns have used two-hundred dollars, and I, I would say that the two-hundred-dollar rate is incredibly affordable for the forty-one C, the very low-income seniors. It's pretty affordable for the group of everyone getting exemptions, and it's on the expensive side for the whole group of people who get the circuit breaker. So if you wanted to go to the whole circuit breaker, you might start out at a hundred-dollar relief instead of two-hundred, and a hundred would still be a thirteen percent reduction for the average user.
So we will still, on, on these, on these people, we will still be monitoring their usage, their water and sewer usage, there wouldn't simply just be a flat rate?
That, that's not, that's, that is so expensive for us. You know, if, if you made the flat rate as Northborough does, forty dollars, that becomes very expensive. I mean, it's a five-hundred-dollar discount per recipient, and that's, and the sewer enterprise is challenged. It's a lot to put on to the other users at the same time, so, it's a- This could be a start slow, you know, a start, a, one start slow approach would be a two-hundred-dollar discount for all eighty or all twenty of those groups of recipients, or, you know, a, a hundred dollars for all the circuit breaker people. Those would be reasonable things to start with and test and see. You know, we could also incite more people applying if we start giving more discounts. There may be people who don't bother to apply now, so we really want to be, this is really a thing I would prefer to test in a good year, when revenue is good and we have some reserves. But this is the year when we're impacting people.
Yep.
And so we want to maybe take a little more risk than we might ordinarily take.
So, in, in that regard, and I'm directing this to the finance team, starting slow may mean going with a group of twenty.
The forty-one C, I mean, there's, there's no argument that if you own a home and are living here and paying our taxes and rates, and you qualify for that forty-one C with an income of under thirty-seven thousand dollars, that's a pretty substantial level of need. Having just gone a price sharper last night, I can, that's, that's, that's a pretty needy group.
So if we, so say we were to apply that two-hundred-dollar discount to the eighty percent, which includes that forty-one C, blind, Gold Star, disabled veteran?
Right. I would, I would recommend then, you know, looking at it right now, that the, that the, you increase the proposed raises by half a percent.
A half, so from thirty-five to thirty-five-
One-half of one percent.
From thirty-five to thirty-five and a half?
Yes, sir.
For the eighty?
Yes. To, to take care of the eighty, with that level of support.
Now, that, that would be under both approaches, the option one and option two?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And probably, more important to do the half percent, and I would do it for, across the board, for option one and option two, at the discrete rates. We don't want to outsmart ourselves trying to be, we, we still need to meet our regulator's requirement, and we're, we're, we're working with a pretty sharp pencil here.
Yep.
Yes, perhaps at this point, we would ask the board if there are any further questions on sewer, and if the board does not have any further questions on sewer, we will turn to the public and ask if the public has any questions on sewer before we turn to water.
Okay. Does the board have any further questions on sewer?
Do not.
No? No? Okay. Public? Okay, move on to water?
Great. Wrap-up water is quite a bit simpler. This year, this year. Again, referencing the summary sheet, the first four points on the summary sheet review what we discussed at the last meeting. Water is stable now, as Mr. Camallo said, but due to a projected drop-off in connection fees and an expected capital need for new debt, the water enterprise will need more fee revenue to remain stable in twenty, twenty-five, and beyond. And we recommend addressing that earlier rather than later, and doing so with more modest increases now rather than very large increases later. Option one is to begin a series of two percent rate increases now, and to track the situation as we approach twenty-twenty-five, with the probability that we'll make some slightly different adjustment as we get closer to twenty-twenty-five. Option two is there to recognize that we are going to have very large increases in the sewer enterprise this year and next year, and that many of our water users are also sewer users. So that option would delay the ramp-up in water rates until after customers have a chance to adjust to these sewer changes. So instead of going two, two percent increases all along, we would pause the water for a while to provide some relief, and then start some six percent increases to catch up and get on track, so we're not facing a big bulge in twenty-twenty-five. The most important thing to remember about water is that no action on rates for several consecutive years will land us in a situation similar to the one we're in with sewer in twenty-twenty-five, where a very large rate increase will be required. So, because of the situation with sewer, we're providing option two as a, a second alternative. If it weren't for the sewer situation, we would really be very strongly advocating for the slow, steady increase in rates. This could be a tough year for our users.
So, based on, sort of moderate use, so we, I know we have the low users and the high users-
Yes.
Based on the, on the, on a moderate user, when we talk about that option one, the two percent increase-
Right.
What, give me a dollar.
So if, if you look at the summary sheet that was in the package, and I can speak from it, that section on the right of the table shows our entire user profile, and it shows that the average user in the fiftieth percentile uses about sixty, hundred cubic feet a year, six thousand cubic feet a year, and that their rates would go from a hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars to a hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Four dollars a year, imperceptible-
Okay.
Nearly imperceptible increase. Although, I am a veteran who gets care from the VA, and I can tell you when prescriptions went from a dollar to two dollars, people screamed about the hundred percent increase. So there will be a small number of people who, who can still find a way to, to, not like this very good story with sewer, but, you know, that's, that's a pretty low impact. And what we did there is show, you know, and for people at the very bottom who use almost no water, it goes from fifty-one dollars to fifty-two dollars, it's a dollar. And then you see the big top users, and we have people using a quarter of a million cubic feet of water. And I thought my kids took long showers, but that is a lot of water, and they would have a sixty-six-dollar impact.
This is a residence?
Yeah, those are the top fifteen users in the whole system. We have residences over a hundred thousand. I don't know what the top residence tops out at. I, I don't know if you know, but-
I don't either.
I, I looked through the whole data file, and a couple things jumped out, but I don't. There are residences using over a hundred thousand cubic feet. I assume they have orchards or, you know-
Yeah, well, then they need to pay a little bit more.
Or, or elephants, you know, they pay a lot to wash. Car wash for the kuanos, I don't know, but it's, we can say car wash here. But, but the water, you know, the, the rates for, our rates for water are very competitive, and the impacts are pretty modest, so it's really more about, you know, do you, do you want to, how do you want to treat this user cohort, because it has the half overlap with the sewer cohort this year?
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr., well, I will take comments from the board on this. Start down this way. Mary Jo?
Well, I think, I think that's pretty clear. I was looking at Mr. Abrams' report earlier, which was, had no increase this year and next year, but then six percent, and I think that we really do have to do the two, two percent for the water. Just doesn't make sense not to.
Mr. Herr?
I agree, this is the front ear.
Mr. Catino?
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want another spike in three or four years.
Mr. Masru?
Yeah, I agree. I think the two percent makes a lot of sense, just to, and I understand the impact on, with the sewer rates, but even the largest user will only be paying sixty-six dollars or more, so, and if they're using that much water, I think they can afford it.
All right. Is there any comment from the public? Hearing none.
Mr. Chair, move to close of public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Paris, please.
Through the chair, you know, it's, it's funny, you know, two years ago, I would have been arguing, what do we really need, a two percent decrease, but with the, the thirty-five percent increase, it's like, okay, only two, it's not too bad, but it's, it's still, it's, it's, it's a shame that we don't have enough users for both water and sewer, and then, you know, that's, you know, that, that's on us as a town, the chamber and the, and the town, the planning board, zoning, and everything else, to do what we can to try and attract businesses to utilize that sixteen-million-dollar betterment that we did for South Street. We really do have to work hard to attract businesses to our town, whatever we can do.
So, I will, Mr. Camallo, would it be appropriate for me to request a motion for option one on the water? Would now be the, the time to-
Yes, correct, please.
Sounds like the board was in agreement, that's the only reason I'm-
Yeah.
Yes.
So I will take a motion to, I'll make a motion to accept option one on the water.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's good. All right, so now we'll talk about sewer.
If I may, through the chair, and the motion will reflect that the new rate is effective July one, twenty-nineteen.
And I said two percent, that's-
Two percent.
Two percent.
Yeah. Okay, so, I guess we've got to talk about the sewer enterprise, and the option one, option two, or something in between there, so-
So, one thing that concerns me about the option two, where we have the rising, the rising levels, is the rising percentages, is conservation, basically. I mean, our people, when people are knowing how much of an increase, you know, their bills will be, we're going to have some conservation, people want to lower the, the amount that they're using, and then I ask, will we, will we still have enough money, you know, to make up for all the conservation? As opposed to just going thirty-five percent across the board, where everyone's getting hit the same.
So, Mr. Chairman, sir, the, both options provide the same amount of money. We talked briefly at the last meeting about this issue, the elasticity of demand, that if we raise rates this much, use could go off, and the town accountant just came and whispered that in my ear again, that we should be aware that there's a possibility that use will go down, so we have a lot of things going on, we have some growth occurring, we could have some decline in use from the rate. I, I, when you're already raising thirty-five percent, I think my, my preference would be to, if we have a use drop, we explain it to the DOR and we adjust next year.
Okay.
And we're making a good faith effort to solve this problem. It's a large, substantial, compelling change to stabilize the system. We know we're signaling here on recorded public record, the need for another rate change next year. I just don't know that you want to go too much farther with, you know, rate changes in case use drops off that could themselves lead to more use dropping off, right? It's that negative cycle, and so it's an excellent question, how do we hit the sweet spot without doing even more damage driving users out? And, and it's an excellent point, and I'm ready to make the argument to DOR that we're doing a good job, and a, a very conservative person who never wanted to come here and get yelled at by you a year later would tell you, you have to raise them forty-two percent, because we could have this rate drop, and, but we're trying to be sensitive to the, to the rate holders as well.
Okay.
Rate pairs.
Board, well, I guess, Mr. Catino, you're the next guy, up on the process, right?
Nah, it, it's, again, it's, there's, there's not much we can do at this point. We're, we're stuck with this, and we, we have to solve the problem, and it's, it's going to be a tough pill to swallow, people are going to be upset, but-
There's nothing we can do about it.
There's nothing we can do about it, but you had a great proposal there, to, to try and alleviate it on our, on our most marginalized people.
Mr. Herr?
Are we still on option one and, or two, or are we on option one or two and the eighty or two-fifty?
I think we're on option one or two right now.
Including eighty, or, we'll talk about that separately?
Because the board is deliberating, deliberating, I think the board should look at this comprehensively. It's either option, it's either option one plus-
Okay.
Yes, or option two plus, yes.
All right, so, Mr. Herr?
So, in general, and I think it's an important comment, not because I'm saying it, but I just think it's-
We're running a business here, it's the water and sewer enterprise business. We have customers, we have a couple of big customers that have gone away, and I've run
a lot of businesses over the years, it's all, a lot of people in town, and when you lose a couple of big customers, you have to adjust, and sometimes that adjustment is very difficult. And that's what this is, that's what boiled down to for me. It's not like, you know, for six years, we sat around and did nothing, just watched the sewer water implode, but the last couple of years, we've lost these customers, and that's caused a big challenge, so I think it's important to get that out there, and as a result, we have to adjust, and my view would be to do the tiered approach with, I'm between the eighty and the two-fifty, somewhere in there. I'm kind of stuck on, I'm not sure which one.
Okay.
That's what I have for, at this moment.
Okay. Mister Farnier?
Well, I have to agree with Mister Herr. I was for the tiered approach, where the lesser water users get a, get a break, and the more water you use, the more you pay. And, you know, we might get some conservation with that also, but I, I think the tier approach is, is the logical approach for us.
Okay. So, um, I also feel the same way that you guys do on the tiered approach. I like the, um, option number two with the eighty, um, with the, uh, the section forty-one C, which includes the blind, the Gold Star, the disabled veterans, et cetera, uh, and not including up to the two-hundred and fifty. And I was, initially, I, my thought process was the two-fifty, um, and the reason that I changed that is, you made a, a, a good argument to say that if we start low, uh, monitor it. If it's a successful program, we're able to weather the storm, so to speak, then we can maybe expand it next year to the, um, to the two-fifty. But for right now, that's my thought process on the, why I would like to go with the eighty and not the, uh, two-hundred and fifty. You know, I think that those are probably some of the people that are most in need, and, um, anytime I have a chance, or we have, sorry, we have a chance to include the, um, the veterans and the Gold Star families. Those are very near and dear to my heart, um, that's my thought process on that.
Mister Chairmen's.
Great.
So, just to tell you what the numbers would be for that, so, to give the two-hundred dollar discount to the people who qualify for the exemptions, that group of eighty, the rates for option two would go up to, uh, nineteen point five, forty-one point five for the second group, and forty-two point five for the third group. Those would be this year's rate increases.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mister Nasrul.
I wanna give the pitch on the thirty-five percent across the board, okay? Um, when we're talking about a tiered approach, we're saying that if you're using X amount of water, you're gonna get this. If you go up, then you use up, then you're, you're, you're paying a higher amount per gallon, right? Um, you can also reduce your bill by using less water. So, any, I mean, if we, if we went, what, the, the question I'm raising is when we have the tiered approach, I think the final number that we're gonna get at the end is a little nebulous. We're not sure what it's going to be. Whereas with the thirty-five percent, we know that there's gonna be some conservation, thirty-five percent across the board. We know there's gonna be some conservation, but I think that final number becomes a little more definitive, right? And if, I, I, and I fully support the, uh, the eighty people, the Gold Star families and the extreme part, and they, you know, the thirty-five percent is, uh, when we give them that discount, it's certainly not gonna impact them as hard. So, I'm actually in favor of the thirty-five percent across the board, um, with the, uh, with the relief for the eighty.
Um, don't know if this is Mister Cardy, Mister Westling, can you give me, um, a percentage of houses in town that use the, the lowest tier, the middle tier, and the highest tier? Approximate.
Oh, sir, I can actually give you that.
Tried to get it.
So, the, the first tier for under ten would be twenty percent of the people use. Nope, I'm sorry, that's the tenth percentile. Hmm, nope, it's less. It's less. The tenth percentile is twenty hundred cubic feet, so it's somewhere under the tenth percentile that use that lowest tier. And then if you go up to the eight thousand cubic feet, you're talking up to about the seventieth percentile. And then above that is the top thirty percent.
You got any question on the tier versus flat rate?
I'm there too, thank you.
Mister Cardy, if, um, does the tiered approach dissuade some of the water sprinklers I've seen on in the last couple of weeks? Do you think? Given we've had about twenty-eight thousand inches of rain this spring, and people still turn these things on? Would that impact that at all, or is that just something we're never gonna, that habit, would that mindset's just not gonna change?
Uh, I, I think it's through you, Mister Chairman. I, I think it is, depending on some place, some places it is, uh, I think some people do take that into consideration. I think there's others that, that don't. As you're saying, we try to leave notes, we see people that haven't gone during the rainstorm to remind them. Put a letter out, we do a hockington independent every year, try to remind the storms, I, I think it's a little mixture of, uh.
Do you think the tiered approach would help us in managing that a little bit? Because I, I literally took mine offline. And then I'd just gone through a season of selling my house and explaining twenty-eight thousand times why I took mine offline. Because you can have green grass through June in Hopkinton, July fourth comes, you wanna turn it on, and town says, turn it off. And I turned mine off, and then I just took it offline because it was. But I'm wondering how much of our users are in this grouping, and I'm gonna get nasty grand about attacking people's grass, but what percentage of our users are in this group that just love to water their grass? When they shouldn't be watering their grass by law, right? Can you answer that, or is that just?
The percentage part, I couldn't, I know that the tier part, uh, definitely, people do take that into consideration. You can see some of that in the figures that they do it, and just as an O two, the state actually does require that we have an increasing tier. That's a requirement for all municipalities, just as I know.
So, the top twenty percent use over ninety-four hundred cubic feet of water, which is, which is fifty percent above our mean. So, half again above the mean, and.
Cause they're definitely watering it off.
They're, they're, they're doing something, they're.
Through the chair.
I felt close to, I get it, but.
So, through the chair. So, the conundrum is, we really do want to sell water. We really do wanna sell water.
We just don't wanna go dry.
You know, but, you know, but we don't, we, you know, that's, well, that is, that's the other question. Do we have enough water in this town? That's the, that's been the question for the last twenty years, and you get different answers. When customers wanna, when, when, when companies wanna come in. You know, do we have enough water to, if, if another lawnzer wanted to come in? Since we have the sixteen million dollar upgrade to our system going up there for water and sewer, you know, can we support them? Because, you know, some people say, oh, no, well, Hopkinton, there's no water, you know, you don't wanna go to Hopkinton. You know, definitively, does Hopkinton have enough water?
Through the chair. Yes.
Uh, the two thousand and fourteen report done by Weston Sampson on water supply and treatment evaluation showed that the town was challenged by, to provide enough water to all of our customers, especially during those months of June, July, and August. Uh, and as the town grows, demand grows, so that period when we're not able to supply sufficient water, that extends out to May, June, July, August, September. So, as, as the system grows, our ability to provide that water decreases. Fortunately, we have the, the town of Ashland, and our intermunicipal agreement with Ashland, where they can supply that water during a few periods, but as Hopkinton reservoir drains, they're no longer able to supply the water that we need. When we get into October, November, their ability to provide water that we need diminishes rapidly. So, we're, we're, we're challenged to be able to provide sufficient water from our own sources. Uh, but again, fortunately, we have that supply from Ashland, which is, again, that is at risk as they use it, and as they grow, as the water loves that reservoir.
It was just two or three years ago, we were in a serious drought here in New England, and, um, yet we were watering lawns when we were not supposed to be watering lawns in the community. We absolutely were, there were people in my neighborhood doing it, and every other neighborhood I drove through in town. Uh, and the, and the reservoir, the Hopkins State Park reservoir, I mean, you could walk out almost to the middle of that thing. It was scary. So, yeah, we need to sell water, but we need to be responsible residents about what we do with that water. And if the tiered approach is gonna help guide a little of that behavior, that's one of the reasons why I was thinking, we, we look at that. I understand the flat rate, but I, if it's not gonna guide the behavior, then, you know, I'd take the argument up there, but I think it might.
Mister Cloud?
In, in fact, Miss Hey, um, you, you took the words out of my mouth. I, I hear the board's comments regarding conservation. I hear the board's questions regarding the tiered approach versus the flat rate approach. I think, and I believe, the tiered approach has a clear nexus and a clear connection with conservation. Why that is important comes back to the question raised by Mister Cutino, namely, if we're going to sell more water, the town will need to have the permit to withdraw more water. For the town to get the permit to withdraw more water, we need the conservation. So, in a way, I think the tiered approach may be the best, better option of getting the town to continue pursuing measures that balance this conflicting need.
Mister Cutino?
Water meters. Will we ever go more than half the distance to the goal line? Maybe we're just like, uh, you know, Mister Cutino, ten percent, ten percent, we're gonna do ten percent a year. But then when we were growing at that, at that same rate, then, then it seemed like we were never gonna catch up. Are we ever gonna catch up?
Through the chair, water meters ties into unaccountable water and non-revenue water all at once. Uh, so, a couple of points on non-revenue water. We offer conservation kits to our residents. We conduct annual leak detection surveys. Last year, we found two small leaks that we repaired right away. We completed our third water audit, uh, and eliminated unaccountable water. Uh, because of our efforts, we are functionally equivalent to DEP's goal for unaccountable water. And with regard to water meters, we're on pace to replace four hundred water meters this year, which gets to the ten percent. And we're targeting replacement of the oldest meters first. We do test a sample of the meters that were replaced, and they're all showing they're reading accurately despite the radiation.
Thank you.
All right.
Through the chair.
Mister Nasrul.
Last thing.
Last thing.
Um, Mister Herr got me thinking about the water, watering lawns when we're not supposed to, and I've seen plenty of sprinklers going on, uh, while it's raining. And, uh, one of the questions I had is, do we have any kind of program or any kind of, uh, ability to negotiate for, for smart, uh, controllers for, you know, for sprinkler systems?
Mister Chairman, that would most likely require PILR, um, in order to enforce them. You, the town halls and try to, actually, and take it up, should be able to use them, like, if we have to improve, uh, town PILR.
Well, I'm not saying requiring it, I'm saying offer, like, through volume discount. So, if the, if the DPW were able to negotiate with any of these companies that provide smart water sprinkler controllers, um, maybe, you know.
Through, through the chair, we can certainly look at that. Uh, we do offer, as I said, um, conservation kits, and that's through a partnership with DEP. So, we can look to see if there's anything out there. It would depend on, on the systems that folks have and the availability of what goes in, but that's certainly something we can explore.
Okay. We're all set? All right. I will entertain a motion for, if someone wants to make a motion, uh, to, uh, set our rates for the sewer enterprise. Nobody will, I will make one. Uh, I would like to, I move to incorporate the eighty residents of the forty-one C, including the blind, Gold Star, disabled American veterans, into the sewer option two, the tiered, uh, tiered option. How's that?
That's second.
With the rate being seventeen point five increase for the lowest tier, thirty-nine point five for the middle tier, and forty-two point five for the highest tier.
That's including that.
Including the eighty, yes, sir.
So, seventeen point five, you, you initially said it was nineteen point five.
Uh, that was for the whole, uh, circuit breaker group.
Okay, okay.
So, that, you can cover the eighty with that increase.
Seventeen point five, forty-one five, forty-two five.
Seventeen point five, thirty-nine point five, forty-two point five. Using option two.
Eighty additional.
Just, just an extra half a percent on everything in option two.
So, there's a motion in the second?
So, it was motion and second, and is there any further discussion on the board?
So, just one quick comment, if I could, cause I, I can see him popping up soon. I love green grass, I really do. I was obsessed with green grass until about forty-five, and I just kinda like, it's like, whatever, you know, it's, I just kinda gave up on it a little bit. Um, so, please, I'm not trying to disparage anybody that's trying to have their house look beautiful, it does look great. But we have a challenge with water, we have a challenge with the rates, we have a challenge with our economics here. Uh, so, I'm not going after people that love green grass, I'm just trying to figure out the balance here. And that's why I'm sort of jumping on the watering the grass through the spring of rain that we've had this year, uh, situation, so.
Mister, through the chair, Mister Herr, I've, I've never had a sprinkler system, and my lawn looks perfect. You plant the right kind of grass, doesn't use water, perfect.
Shout out to Mary Pratt with her drought-resistant grass.
It's true.
So, we're looking for discussion?
So, yeah, so we're still on discussion.
Okay, so, um, just looking at the graph you had here and the user impact, um, you have at the very bottom difference between option one and option two, right?
Right.
So, my last ditch effort on the thirty-five across the board. When we look at the user impact for the, you know, the, the, the tenth percentile, they, it's thirty-five bucks.
Right.
Right? It's thirty bucks for the next year, twenty bucks for the, right?
Yes, sir.
So, are we, my, I guess my question is, if we go with the tiered approach, are we really, um, is, is it that much of an impact for the lowest end users? We're talking thirty-five dollars.
So, the exact answer is for the low users, instead of a sixty-seven dollar increase, they have a thirty-two dollar increase. So, it's half the increase for them. That, so if you felt the sixty-seven dollar increase was a lot for them, it takes half of that off. If you look at the middle users, it was a hundred and ninety-four, and then because they have already bumped into the second tier, they're only saving twenty dollars. So, it starts to fade off. The more you use, so it's a pro conservation measure, cause the more you use, the less benefit you get from the tier, the tiered approach that is reflected in option two. I mean, we could have used different tiers, but to create a bigger spread, and that's why I put that line in there, to show you that this doesn't really change anybody's life. It's just a little relief for some people who may find a sixty-dollar increase to be a lot. And it's really.
And those folks are in our community, and I've been in their living rooms, and they said, you know, that twenty dollars changed last year.
Yep.
I didn't think about it, I have my social security coming each month, and all of a sudden, you know, my hundred and eighty dollars of expendable money for the week was a hundred and sixty bucks, what's up with that? I've had those conversations over the years, so, it's, it, a lot of us, twenty dollars is twenty dollars. It's, a lot of us, twenty dollars is twenty dollars. We need to be, I've been trying to see.
Yeah.
So, through you, um, Tim, if I'm reading this right, those two, I mean, sorry, those eighty folks that fall into the parameters, with that two-hundred dollar discount, if they're a low user.
Right.
Their wa- their sewer bill is now gonna be about twenty-four dollars a year?
Right.
That's awesome. That really is awesome.
So, it's a big, it's a big difference.
It's giant for those people, it really is. And, and I'd like to thank you, and I'd like to thank Mister Kamalo for jumping on this on such short notice and getting this done. It's, uh, you know, the, the seniors have always been, uh, pretty, pretty close to, to me and, and a driving force as a selectman. And the fact that you guys could put this together in, in, uh, basically four or five hours is awesome. Thank you very much for doing this for me, for us. So, the motion's on the table, it's seconded, do we have any further discussion, Mister Kamalo?
Administratively, the motion will reflect that the, the discount is two hundred dollars.
Yes, okay, yes. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions, carries. Thank you very much, on time, good work. Mister Kamalo, I owe you a Fresca, cause I did not think we were gonna put this in an hour. Yeah, we did water for, water and sewer. Thank you guys, thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Tom.
No, I know a check, but I don't remember who.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, Mister Chair, through you, I really wanna thank, uh, John Westling, Eric, uh, Mark from the, uh, Matt from the Abrams Group, uh, Tim O'Leary, uh, Ben Sweeney, uh, Dave, Dave was somewhere here, I can't see Dave. Uh, they've done a fantastic job getting us ready for these discussions.
Really was, it was, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the interactive fight.
It's hard to believe that I am actually excited for a thirty-five percent increase about a month, but, uh, it really.
I think the team should be ready to get a few phone calls asking how this is gonna impact our seniors and sure folks to be reaching out to them quickly.
Yeah.
Be ready.
Yep, that's great, thank you, sir. Uh, so, Mister Kamalo, on an earlier question, I asked you if we needed to wait till eight forty for this tree hearing, do we? forty for this tree hearing, do we? It's not a, it doesn't say public hearing.
Yeah, it's a reported hearing, but where's John? You forgot.
There he is. John, you gotta stay.
So... Yes, sir.
All right, so, the tree warden held a tree hearing on Monday, June tenth, for the removal of three town trees on Hayden Row necessary for the completion of the intersection of the project at Chestnut Street. The removal of the trees is required to allow the installation of the new utility poles to accommodate the new pavement design and the installation of the traffic signal. There were no attendees at the public hearing, however, one resident objected to the removal of the forty-inch maple tree in front of one-eighty-five Hayden Row. The only way for the tree to be removed is by the decision of the select board. So, um, all right, so, basically, Mr. Westling, there are three trees that have to come down. You posted a public hearing, nobody showed, you got a letter probably, or an email stating that the resident at one-eighty-five is opposed to us taking their forty-inch maple tree in front of their house?
Opposed to taking down the town's forty-inch tree, correct?
Yeah, yeah, on town property, but in front of their house?
Correct.
Um, one-eighty-five is...
Do we fix that?
Is obviously distal to...
So, one-eighty-five, this is, this is Chestnut Street...
Yeah.
And Hayden Row. Uh, if you're turning, if you're coming out of Chestnut Street, one-eighty-five is the house on the left.
Okay.
And the tree is right here on the corner.
Yep, I know, well, I've been to a few of those car accidents.
And I did reach out to both Eversource and Verizon to ask if there was any way to save the trees, and they both said that in order to save the trees, they'd have to redesign their entire electrical and telephone...
Enough said, yeah, enough said.
Include property rights and delays to the project, which we've already suffered...
I'm sure they're both going to jump right on that, because they're that responsive.
If I may...
Yes.
Through the chair, um, can you confirm that this resident who emailed this concern was contacted for this hearing?
They were contacted by email and asked to call me so that we could look to see if we could, uh, what the options were there to ameliorate the loss of the tree, and I have not heard back.
Can you confirm the time of eight forty P M.?
Well, it's...
For tonight?
Through the chair, at the, at the, at the tree hearing, the tree warden closed the public hearing, there was no one there, and then extended it to the Board of Selectmen meeting, and I did reach out by email to those residents on two occasions, and I haven't heard back. I don't believe that they lived there. Can you, Mr. Kamalo, one second, can you verify that the, the person that was, the person that was against the removal is the property owner of the home and not a tenant?
Uh, yes, I can.
Okay.
Uh, through, Mr. Chairman, the, on the, the maps here, so, there's now a formerly Elizabeth V Davidson trustee, and it was, the email was from, uh, Ms. Davidson.
Okay.
Who is it? I don't know.
Yeah, and through...
Brian Bento, used to own that for a long time.
Oh, yeah. Through the chair...
Yes.
Uh, John, do you, do you mind bringing up the Google Maps so that the board can see the tree?
Sure. Bear with me.
Yeah, we can go down the street, I don't look at it.
Yeah.
Did you get your bucket truck yet to remove said tree? If that's, uh...
No, sir. For what it's worth, so, it's, it's this tree here?
Yeah.
And for what it's worth, I had a discussion, as I was seeking a quote from Joe Regan Tree, he said that this tree, that the top has fallen off several times, there's nothing left of value to the tree, these are all, uh, suckling limbs that have come in afterwards. Um, it is a, it is an old tree, however, it is in the way, and we can certainly look and work with the, the property owner to put in shrubs or bushes, or a couple of smaller trees back to where that was.
Good. All right. Any discussion, further discussion on the board?
I just want to reaffirm what Mr. Westling just said there, so, we're going to take that tree out...
Yeah.
And we're going to put in some low...
Perhaps.
Some low-height plantings to soften the corner a little bit.
We will, we'll work with the property owner, as we have with the other property owner across, across Chestnut Street, we'll work with that property owner to see what we can do there to, uh, to lessen the impact of losing that tree.
Okay.
All right. As long as we're doing it or not.
We're good?
Oh, yeah.
One, one last look.
Just the fact that it's dying?
Yeah, look at that.
Here's a good look, you can see that the, the, the actual trunk of the tree has gone, and these are just lower branches that are branching out.
So, so, Mr. Nasrul.
Sorry, uh, is, is it true that this tree is really dying? I mean, is that what the, the tree warden is saying, that it's going to fall on its own, or...
Uh, through the chair, if it were dead or dying, we would have removed it, uh, out of right, uh, but because it's not, we had to post the tree hearing. And again, here's another angle, you can see that the trunk has gone.
Yeah.
The top of the tree has gone, so, these are, and I suspect it, what I was talking about with Mr. Regan, the top of the tree here is rotten, there's not a lot of value left to this poor old tree.
So, a concern that I have, Mr. Westling, is if we take this tree down that is in, I guess you'd say, disrepair, I would not want the town to be on the hook if the property owner wanted to, wanted to replace it with seven or eight twelve-foot-tall Japanese maples at eight thousand dollars each. So, there, there would need to be, uh, you know, I'm glad with, with kind of making some ground covers, some shade, or, or whatever, but, you know, it can be a, it can be a beech tree from Weston Nurseries and not a, uh, not a couple of, you know, six-foot-tall Japanese maples.
We're under no obligation to do anything by, by law, where we're trying to be a reasonable company. I don't understand, it's going to be a change for that resident, but, yeah, I totally agree with you, just trying to sort it out.
I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
They become unreasonable, you said, I think.
Mr. Kamalo, on the left side of that screen, right there, is that a double pole? It's like a, it's like a double pole.
Yeah.
Couldn't be, though, they, they've got those all taken care of.
That's going to be...
Yeah, that would be... So, all right, so, I will, uh, John, you want to make a motion on this one? If we're ready, are we ready for motion? Okay. If I seem rushed here, it's because it's my daughter's birthday today. I'm trying to get her...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the removal of a town tree, a forty-inch maple in the Hayden Row right of way in front of one-eighty-five Hayden Row, so as to allow for the work necessary to complete the Hayden Row, Chestnut Street intersection project.
Your motion, do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries, good. Mr. Westling, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, town managers' report.
Yeah, three items through the chair. Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee, I'm requesting board authorization to review the charge for the committee, and also offer recommendations to the board at a future meeting. Uh, reasons are twofold. One, we have two members of the whole committee who have continued doing fantastic work, bringing advantageous and beneficial, uh, grants to the community, working alongside the town facilities director. And then, most recently, I had a meeting with a couple residents who are so passionate about this topic, and they really want to get involved. So, based on those two things, I'm asking the board that, uh, perhaps we should take a look at the charge and see how we can...
Absolutely, I'm good with that.
Make some recommendations.
Board good with that? Yeah?
I think it's great. I know that Turbin and Hollison are working together on this program.
I just saw that one in the newspaper, I said Hollison.
Yeah.
All right, next.
Yeah, Main Street Corridor Project, uh, first off, and this is not in, in, in my notes to the board, we had a fantastic meeting with the chamber this, this afternoon, uh, received very valuable feedback, uh, specifically on what we could do to continue to improve, uh, the quality of the project, and several things were discussed. One was making sure that the trees that are planted are indigenous, two, that we review, um, continuing the flashing pedestrian sign that is in front of Town Hall. Um, number three, they also had suggestions on, um, it being clear on where we are adding, um, recycling, recycling receptacles, and also parking for bicycles, uh, especially along the, um, stretch of Main Street between the intersection as well as, uh, Hayden Row. Uh, again, very good meeting, good feedback given to us. The business community continues to, uh, desire details on how the, uh, business district will operate during construction, so, we're going to look into that further. And finally, they also suggested, what I thought was a great idea, that there be a clear point of contact for the business community during construction.
Good. And...
F Y nineteen year-end.
Yep.
Great work done by the accounting manager's office, um, Janet, Dave, and everybody else. Uh, they are now finalizing the F Y nineteen year-end processes. Uh, in my memo, I did mention a few things that I think of, of interest to the board, grant balances, encumbrances, uh, uh, year-end transfers. These do impact, uh, our free cash, and as you know, the board will also be reviewing , uh, year-end transfers at your next meeting.
Good. All right, liaison report, is that all you got, Mr. Kamalo?
Yeah, that's it.
Liaison reports. Mary Jo.
Well, other than, um, I'm meeting with the tax relief committee tomorrow morning, and then I have talked with the board of assessors, and then I've talked with the marathon committee, and I was speaking with some of those on this new, that want to be on the new green committee, and, uh, gotten some feedback from the historical society on the, uh, the house on Main Street that are trying to get to clear historical, so, that's it.
Mr. Herr.
The new chair of the school committee reached out to say hello, um, just wanted to begin a dialogue about sort of the upcoming year, and, uh, I told her we'd get together till mid-July, late July, after I get through a couple other things. Um, but, uh, the school committee is eager to, uh, work with us next year, and looking forward to having that conversation.
Yep, it's a very amenable board right now, I think. Mr. Cortino.
Well, last week was a whirlwind, um, uh, week for the B A A liaison, after at least the R F P, the, uh, B A A had been for a meeting at their Boston office to discuss, uh, um, the, uh, impact of it, and, and what they could do to help. The C E O, Tom Grillke, said, um, he's enthusiastically supportive, and whatever support that we need, uh, over and above the support Hawketon already, uh, gets for the, uh, lease logistics. Um, and then we had the newspaper article in twenty-five on that, it was wonderful. Now, today, um, I went to the, um, uh, economic development seminar that was put on by, um, uh, the Senate President Spilka, from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism was there, uh, Kiko, um, Oral, and Michael Quinlan from the Marketing Office, they were all interested in asking us about, uh, you know, how they could help out, uh, with whoever answers that R F P, and, um, and Senator, Senator Spilka, again, uh, is extremely enthusiastic about it and, uh, about the possibility, and, uh, just thinks it's going to be a great thing for the region and for the state itself. So, we're getting great feedback on the, uh, on the, uh, the R F P going out, because it just, it absolutely matches with Hawketon's vision statement, and, uh, the economic benefits can be just astronomical. So, it, uh, we're just getting great, great returns on that, so, thank you very much, Kamalo, Mr. Kamalo, for getting that out, because, uh, uh, we're getting great results. Thank you.
Good job, and good job on that, uh, news report there on Fox News.
Still haven't seen that link yet.
Hmm?
Do you get the link? I'd like to see that news.
Oh, sure.
It's running on a continuous feed in his garage.
I have none. Brian, we can run it up there?
Yeah, we can run it here, yeah.
Oh, yeah, then the twenty-thirty thing today, that, that D O T.
Next door turn it off. Various reasons.
You want something else?
Yeah, I just, um, I had a thought, and I meant to say something earlier, um, the Marathon Fund Committee, Marathon Committee had a vote, and they voted Charles Wallace to replace me on the Marathon Fund Committee, and he's been going to all the meetings, and Marathon Fund Committee voted to accept Chuck Wallace as their member from the Marathon Committee.
Good. He's, uh, pretty well-known in town. Um, so, I, I had a...
Bobby's husband, right?
I, yep, uh, yep. So, I had a, uh, a couple open space meetings, and we've been talking about a few properties here and there, and sprucing things up, and, uh, that's going pretty well. I would like to mention that the, uh, I spent, uh, a good portion of my kid's inheritance at the carnival, um, this week, and, uh, that seemed to go off kind of without a hitch. I didn't hear of any, uh...
No, nothing.
Any adverse issues, or parking, or, or angry neighbors, or anything, so, it's, it's, uh, cuts off to Erin Graziano and her crew, and, uh, for the people that were, that went out and was, um, did such a good job, kind of proactively taking care of any issues and concerns, um, and, um, that's all I have there. Future board agenda items. Anyone got anything?